That's going by too fast.
Three strands of light.
Oh, well, there you go. You qualified. Yeah, you're not the Grinch on that street. The Alpaca Farm has some too, maybe I can see? I don't remember.
You can see their tree through the window, but I don't think they have a satellite.
No, I don't remember. I was trying to pay attention and drive.
The tree is eighteen years old.
Hey there.
I don't know, people, I don't know.
I do, we do with the kids, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was.
It's up high, you don't have to.
There's a neighborhood over in, uh,
And I don't really watch anymore. I'm here every Monday.
Because it go up, uh, the next year, is that right?
Well, so you have a matter of states.
So, is that what it's called again?
The freight due states over there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It used to be huge there.
Used to be.
It used to be huge, like what a great dinner, right?
Well, I don't, I don't know where I came from.
Oh, is that what I was doing? Uh, so that's, I worked, I worked around.
You never, never remember.
A few houses were not like, I was remembering like this, like a whole street being down, it's not going across.
Well, it was on the loop too.
Yeah. There's a place up in, for all right.
Yes.
Yeah, 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 I think it's that one.
Yeah, we went there too. We have to get down to dirt.
Yeah, 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 because we donate some change or whatever.
Yeah, exactly.
We like to go there, it's a bit quiet.
We want it one.
Our town does one, but I've been doing nine.
Yeah.
I was thinking about it.
Oh, you, oh, you have a house? Oh, we have a church. You know, I get that, it's still late, I was having a good time. Kind of like a test.
And then you get, yeah.
It's a longer ride.
Yeah.
Especially if you work over there, you got to pass the first.
Yeah, yeah, that is a little.
From two different angles.
Yeah, okay. Let's take like that. All right, everyone, it's six thirty and a call to order the December seventeenth, the Rollinsford, Rollinsford Select Award. The first, the first item on the agenda is approval of minutes for December tenth. Good people have a chance to read it.
Okay.
Any additions, edits, corrections?
No.
And by consensus, we will adopt those. Uh, community input. All right, so the first thing we have on the agenda is Chad Robert from Avatar. Come on up, Chad. We have some questions, concerns, comments about the, um, uh, contract for twenty nineteen. All right. Now, last week, I was a little more animated, but I got some information beforehand. I think he's had a conversation with Caroline, so I'm a little less concerned. I'm concerned about something different now. So, um, we need to depend on volunteers. Here's a lot for some of what we do, some of what doesn't get done, I guess. And it's my understanding that we had a former chair of the board that did a lot of the assessing input, and then stopped at some time, we don't know when, right?
Uh, it was right around two thousand fifteen.
Twenty fifteen, okay, so about,
Two thousand and ten?
Yeah, so, but you didn't know that he'll stop? So there's some errors and things we're trying, we're finding and catching up and doing some corrections now, or?
No, it's more or less, we didn't know if the town was gonna be depending on us, or someone else was gonna be taking the spot from the town. So a lot of what Ed was doing was, um, you know, for new construction, he was taking over permits and attaching to the cards, and then we would get the cards and go out in the field. So now what we're doing is we're coming in and putting the permit information into the system, and doing that ourselves. So that's one of the things.
Okay.
Um, he also handled land use change tax himself. So if a property wasn't current use and it needed to come out, he would do it himself. Well, he, yeah, he just,
He just was stopped?
Yeah.
Okay.
So those were some of the things that we kind of started to pick up on, um,
Okay.
once you started, yeah.
You started catching things, you're like, oh, okay, so obviously it's not getting done, okay. So that's where some of the errors that we've been, like folks have come in and there's been some issues with, um, current use. So I was like, the current, the land use change tax would have been computed for things coming out, right, of current use?
Uh, yes.
Well, I guess I would be concerned about what errors. There shouldn't be any errors. Well, there was, there were properties, weren't there properties in the last year or two that were, should have been assessed at, or weren't assessed at current use, and some that were, and we don't have maps?
I think they've caught that, and, and it happens when land transfers.
Okay.
So it's, it's kind of an ongoing thing that the current use files are out of date. They often don't contain maps, which they should.
Okay, all right.
And that's just an old problem that we should work with Avatar to continue to update.
And you're not the only town. I mean, every town's playing catch-up when it comes to current use. I mean, it, it's just because, you know, it was something that was, you know, handed down by the states, like this is what we're gonna do, and then, you know, ten years later, it's like, oh, we should probably get maps of where the current use is.
Well, I guess some of my confusion was before where, um, there's an increase in, in the contract, I'm not gonna give you both the chance to talk, sorry. But there, there was an increase in, in the contract charge, because it was for, some of it was for additional hours.
Mm-hmm.
I guess I was understanding that additional hours is because, I assumed that you were the assessing company we hired, that you were doing this all along, and that wasn't true. Now, I know this now, um, but then it stopped. And so if someone has to do it, and I would assume that the experts that we hired would be the folks that would be doing it, instead of folks that come and go, you know? So I guess that's what part of my confusion was. So please go ahead.
Well, I don't know if this is some, I, I don't think assessing is, should be done by anybody unless you're an assessor. That's my opinion. I mean, there must be things that you have to know. But is there some things that our tax collector can do if we give her additional hours that would stop? I don't know all of the particulars, but I know she works very closely with you, correct?
Yep, yep.
So is it something that, some of those things that, um, the previous life board member did, can she do?
Yep, so I think I've kind of gotten with her on the, like, the thing that took up a lot of hours was actually putting in the permits. So coming in and going through all the permits for the year, putting them in the system,
Right.
with the correct parcel. Because, I mean, ideally, you'd be doing that as you get them, so that, because there's a, there's a basically a button in assessing. You click it, and it pulls all the properties that have been flagged.
Okay.
Um, and that's kind of what Ed was doing for us before.
Okay.
Um, I've shown Andrew to do that, so I think this year will be the first year we test to see how that's going.
Okay.
So we usually pull that report right around April, a little bit before, uh, because we want to go to the properties as close to April first,
Right.
as we can.
Right.
Because that, that changes the assessment of something with a little value to it that's being done on a building permit, and that's why you need to do that.
Right, and then April first is that year cutoff. So what's on the property on April first is what you are taxed for for the whole year. Um, so that's why we want to go, especially on like new construction.
Yeah.
So one of the things that I think Andrew and I, uh, I started realizing why she was so concerned about it, and it was just something she wasn't aware of. Um, when they were doing Scouse Landing, she was seeing homes being finished and bought for, you know, in September. And they're paying, you know, the three four hundred that they're valued in, but we're only assessing them for forty grand. And it's because what existed there on April first was a foundation. It wasn't the whole house. Um, so, you know, April first is a cutoff. Whatever is there on April first is what's assessed for the rest of the year.
Right.
So there's, you can't go, you can't change that at all the rest of the year?
Not until next year, right.
Oh, okay.
That makes more sense now, too. All right, um, so, we, um,
And I also, I, and just to help you clarify some of those changes, I also, because Caroline had told me what some of the concerns were.
Yeah.
And I look back, so in two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, um, we had contracted or estimated that those years, we're gonna use about six days of our time. And that's what that value was for, for the contract. Um, and we're using closer to eight.
Okay.
Which is why in two thousand fifteen, you saw a, probably from fourteen to fifteen, you saw a contract that went up a little bit.
Right.
Because instead of basing off six days, we based it off of eight.
Okay.
Um, so.
And then fifteen, you were still under the assumption that Ed was doing the entering?
No, and so in fifteen, we thought we could do everything for eight. And we pretty much, I mean, we kind of stayed close to that fifteen. We did almost exactly eight. It was, we used seven point nine six, and we contracted for eight. Um, and we contracted for eight all the way up until two thousand eighteen. Um, but in sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, we used closer to eleven.
Okay.
Um, sixteen was heavy. It was twelve point six seven days, but then it was ten point five days in seventeen. And then two thousand eighteen, we've used eleven up until November thirtieth.
Okay.
Um, I don't think, I have only been here maybe a few hours in December, so it's,
Okay.
a pretty close ballpark. So that's what, this new contract, the reason it is more than the previous is because instead of eight days, we've estimated it on eleven.
Okay.
Okay.
Would that include coming, having certain dedicated days a month where you would, we talked where you'd come to town, like one day out of the month or something like that, sort of dedicated office hours?
Yeah, so Caroline, I kind of touched on that. So the, the eleven days are really, I, I, I kind of use the example, sometimes you can use it for whatever you like. Um, it's eleven days for, you know, filling up what we need to do for assessing.
Okay.
Um, so I told her we can use it for, if you really want to stretch it out, we can do four hours every, once a Friday or, and as we get closer to the end of the year, if we have a lot left, we can increase it.
Okay.
Um, but it's for you to use me, I mean, it's, it's almost like, I won't say it's like an employee, but you can use me for that full eleven hours. Sometimes when I'm there for the, they have me take ACs out of the windows, that was the example I used.
Yeah, we'd rather you do.
Yeah, it's a bad example, though.
Taking ACs out of the window, but okay.
Is there any way that we can get a monthly status of where our hours are, or how many hours we have used, so we know?
Yep, uh, on the bills.
If something comes up that we can?
Yeah, on the bills, there, there will be, it usually will give you the hours and what we used it for. So anytime you see hours on our bill, that is going towards your contract days.
And how many times a year, I'm new here, just so.
Yeah, no, it's okay.
How many times a year do we get a bill from you?
I think it's monthly.
They're monthly.
The monthly, yeah.
So is it something that we keep a spreadsheet, Caroline, so they know where we stand on the amount of hours left over after we've done work?
And it would be typically on the bills when it notes a half an hour, an hour, how much time that he or somebody else spends. It says something like abatements, but if we can make, if we can continue that or make sure that it says something that denotes kind of a category of the activity, so we can track what kinds of activities.
Yeah, that's.
Do you climb on, that would be helpful.
So Chad, is it eleven days or eleven hours?
It's eleven days, so eighty-eight hours.
Eighty-eight hours. Okay.
And it, would it be helpful to get a history? Because I think we track that.
That would be helpful, thank you, yes.
Very helpful. Okay, what else am I? Okay. Are there other questions?
I have a good.
A little more understanding now, I think, than, um, okay. To drag you all the way over here, but.
Oh, I'm just Rochester, so.
I think there's anything else, what am I forgetting that I need to ask, or want, anything you think?
Is there a way, Chad, do you think that we could keep some kind of, um, mutual document that kind of keeps? Um, one of the things that I'd like to see is a way to track ongoing projects that are kind of out there, that are not immediately, um, relevant to a deadline, but we want to make sure that they don't fall off the radar, so that, you know, we can sort of both look at the spreadsheet that sees where you are with a certain thing?
Yeah, I, I hope so, we could do that.
For example?
Well, so what I'm saying is, for example,
Like land use change taxes?
Land use change tax, we know it needs to happen, but it doesn't have to happen right away. Um, we have some, there are some properties that are owned by the town that aren't really owned by the town for, um, including perhaps, and we're still working on this, the water district. Separately, the town cemetery between, um, General John and Silver Street is currently listed as one big property owned by the town, but we know that it's not. It's owned, it's at least four or five parcels. So he's working on breaking that down, and it's gonna take some time.
Okay.
Um, but we want to make sure that we don't lose sight of it.
And then maybe other properties like that, right?
Right.
Just sort of listed it, because they're not taxed, well, at one time, they would just put in Town of Rollins,
Right.
the diocese of Portland would argue that's their cemetery, and the diocese of Manchester, so.
I mean, that's.
Really ours, it should be the tax.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I was talking, we could easily fill up the eleven days, I think. I don't see there being issues, you can always find something in assessing to tackle, whether it's current use or trying to figure out why this property was merged, you know, however many years ago.
Okay. Because I know, yeah, that would be helpful, making sure, making sure our tax cards and maps are accurate. I mean, everyone would be grateful for that, so, um, what else do I want to ask, Chad? Oh, um, going to the Board of Tax and Land Appeal, or maybe I said that, Land and Tax Appeal. Um, is that representative of the eleven days as well, or is that?
Uh, I believe, I'll have to check on, with Lauren on that. I think that includes handling abatements.
Okay.
I'm not entirely sure on the BTLA cases.
Okay, all right, I didn't know if that was, if it's additional, or?
I mean, I think it's billed as CA, but if it goes over, I think it jumps to an hourly at that point, but I will check.
Okay. I know we've had a number of appeals, but I don't know if any of them will actually make it.
Uh, we do, we've got five for Woods Run, and there's one for,
Oh, Silver Street, isn't it?
Silver Street, and one for the Shaws.
Oh, yes.
Eight fifty-one Main Street, yeah, I believe it's the name.
Yeah, yeah, all right. So we could, yeah, I'm sure we can easily fill all those hours, but I want to make sure that.
I'm hoping, I'm hoping with sales, we can kind of take some of those as withdrawals, but.
Okay, all right. Anything else, Chad, this evening?
No.
All right, well, thank you for coming down. Appreciate it.
I didn't want to take a question.
I did, thank you. Have a good night.
You as well, thank you, thanks.
All right. Apartment head, so is the building inspector coming in tonight?
He is coming, not until seven or after seven.
A squeaking noise? I just assumed it was a rat or something, and it was all. It's an old building, it's a mouse problem, or a squirrel, they're prolific this year. Uh, highway is not here yet, George Ward.
Uh, the guy over there.
Sorry, you took my glasses off for a second, George, sorry, come on up, come on up, please.
George wasn't gonna be here, but he's.
It's a runway, you sure could have. What do you have for us tonight? The squeaking stopped when we came off, so it's a good thing.
Two things, actually. We'd like to be able to, where we have some money left, is we want to build the bins for the recycling. Not the wall, not the roof structure, just the walls, so we can separate.
Okay.
We're gonna use Jersey barriers and put an eight-foot wall on top of it, so it's the same height as what the,
We're gonna do that?
Yeah. And we're looking, it's not gonna cost two thousand, but we want to go up to, in case we need to go up to two thousand dollars.
Okay.
That's with milk and building supplies. I don't believe it's gonna come in with you that.
We'll talk about it.
Can you still, can you, can you still move paid bills? I thought this.
Yes, yes, yes.
This is the last opportunity.
To add.
I'll move purchase order fifteen fifty-eight to Milton Building Supplies, I mean, uh, two thousand dollars for building materials for recycling bins.
Second.
Do we have the Jersey barriers currently?
We do, we've, uh, we actually widened out Sligo Road, and, uh, we took a few.
Took that down, okay. So this is really just for actual numbers?
Building material, yeah.
Okay, and what are associated?
Yeah. What I thought, sorry, is to build, like I said, use the Jersey barriers at the bottom, so you can't damage it with the, when you're going in with a skid steer, and the walls will be on top of that. So we can, when we go, bring it, put it in the veil, and we can go in with the machine to grab.
So it'll just be a open, there's not that container.
Right, it's gonna be like, it's stationary dumpster, but we couldn't do it with a dumpster, because climbing in and out of it's gonna damage.
Yep.
So there's some value for them if they decide they want to get rid of some bins. We're gonna have some dumpsters hanging around.
Yep.
So.
Well, you, you're talking, are you talking about dumpsters, you're talking the containers? Or weren't you gonna do that with your tires on a temporary basis?
Oh, yeah, we're gonna, we're not gonna, no, there'll be some that, if we get too many hanging around, there's no sense keeping them. You know, there's some value to them, so.
Okay, so I think maybe I'm not understanding that. So will there be actual containers?
No.
Okay.
These, we can't use the containers, because every time you go in and out with the machine, you're gonna damage the containers.
That's why.
And either gonna be right on the cement, they're gonna be right on the, the ground. It's gonna act like, you know, and we'll have doors that we can open when we want to have to.
Are there, is there concrete underneath?
Yes, it's where the, where the dumpsters sat, for the recycling dumpsters.
Okay.
There's a pad there.
There is a pad there, probably.
So it's like, two sections will be ten feet deep, and two section will be twenty feet deep. You'll need the bigger sections for the aluminum and the, paper, uh, the, uh, glass, it can be a small.
Do we see this as a long-term fix, George, or is it a temporary?
That's a, that's permanent, and then if you decide that we want to put a roof structure on it, we can go right over the top of that. To keep the snow and stuff out of it.
So the wood are just the walls between the sections, there's, that doesn't include a roof?
Right, there's no roof there.
Okay.
This is gonna be no, no paper, though, because you're gonna, you're gonna put the paper inside, okay.
Paper's gonna go inside. With the kind of wood.
Yeah.
Okay.
So let's say in a year, we go back to single stream. I know that's not been happened, but how easy is this to undo? I assume it's just.
It's gonna be bolted on, we can take it, you know, it's a wall, we can take it down if we had to.
But you wouldn't really have to, because you could do single stream in every single one of the bins.
Yeah. Yeah, we'd do it the same way, except we'd have to be filled, you know, you wouldn't be able to put a dumpster there. We all, we'd have to take it out.
Oh, oh, because those changes, I get you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think the odds of, uh, must be able to go back to single stream.
So, you know, that's what I thought, I meant to, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna build it inside the garage. We just bring the walls in, before we assemble it, assemble it now.
You, you have the appropriate talent to do this? Speaking of talents.
Yeah.
If you wanted me to help, the wall's pretty crooked, but.
No, we, we could probably do the job. We vote. A few of us have built our own garages and houses. Two things, Joe. We have some experience, and the tools.
Okay.
Good.
All right. Purchase order fifteen fifty-eight has been moved in second to Milton Building Supplies. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And another winter project we were talking about is, uh, putting a shower stall in the garage. And we can do that ourselves, about a thousand, for about a thousand dollars. If, you know, if, we, you know, if the money's available, roughly, that's what it is, but, I just don't be able to do it this, during the winter months. So I, and it's either gonna be at Home Depot or, FW, wherever we get the unit. I'm trying to find the cheapest one right now, but I know we can get one, you know, the, the unit, then we'll have to build small walls, so that'd be part of the other one.
Is your bathroom big enough to have a stall in there?
Definitely, we could have a party in there.
Oh, no.
We don't want to have a party in there, but we could. You know, the bathroom's ten by ten, or ten by fifteen, or something like that.
And why are we, um, thinking that we need a bathroom?
In the shower.
Why the shower in the bathroom?
Uh, if you get covered in oil or grease and stuff, you know, just contaminated, you had to dump the guys and come over and get, you know, cleaned off, we have. And if you're out all night, you know, it wouldn't hurt to take a shower to get, woke up again.
It says, is it, it's a subject tank there, right?
It's correct, and it's been pumped, and it's been taken care of.
Wouldn't be washing any oil off it.
Heidi,
Okay.
you're gonna, you're gonna rinse yourself off before you, if you had oil, you wouldn't be gonna jump right into the shower, but.
Do you have purchase order for this?
I don't, like I said, I don't know exactly where it's gonna be, but I gave a purchase order up without, you know, for the purpose of building a shower.
Purchase order one five five, oh, you don't have a name.
Wait.
Oh, because you don't know where you're gonna get it?
It's either gonna be Home Depot or FW.
Okay. Purchase order one five five nine, to purchase a shower stall and associated materials, up to one thousand dollars, either at, FW or Home Depot.
I'll second that.
Can I just ask, Caroline a question?
You're probably gonna ask the same question I'm going to.
We, do we have the funds and stuff, I know we.
Oh, there's, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Well, I know we have the failure that's out, and, okay.
So was this something that you were anticipating of doing next year, or is it?
Yeah, we, we were gonna look into doing one. We, we get talking about it, you know, and they, everyone said, you know, it'd be a good idea to have a shower here in case, you know, somebody gets, actually even just to keep it, wake up, you know? It wasn't written in as a shower in the budget, that we have.
All right, we're trying to think of what we had in there for, um, I don't have what we mean, it's across the hall, but what we had written in for, building maintenance, like that, for building maintenance?
Building maintenance, we have no other projects in there, so there's what, that's still, might be the five thousand, or whatever it is, for next year, we need to.
Any other questions?
No.
Purchase order fifteen fifty-nine has been moved in second to, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
You have eye wash stations and all of that stuff too, right?
Yeah, there, there's an eye wash station on the sink. You know, it. Mr. Kucha will not be coming on board.
Huh?
You know, he, uh, the day I called him, he received a call from a job he applied for about a month before, down here at the mill, and he accepted that, before I got a chance to talk with him.
That's too bad.
So I just wanted to give you a heads up on that. Uh, it's Mrs. Galant, corner mechanic and spruce. There's an ongoing complaint about the construction across the street, where they've been in two homes.
Oh, oh, I'm trying to think, oh, yeah, I was trying to think of two houses there, okay.
And she's complaining about the workmanship, the way her yard's been left, I says, obviously, don't, it's not her, it's actually town property, where they ran it right away. But she's calling it very odd where the grass came down off the bank and stuff.
Oh, I see, okay.
And she'd like to have that back, and I said, well, obviously, this time of year, nothing can happen.
Right.
We're gonna keep an eye on that. Every time I tell them, you know, what needs to be fixed, they take, then taking care of it, and of course, they can't plant grass and stuff right now.
Not this time of year, no.
Just giving you a heads up that, you know.
Your thing on top of, um,
Yeah.
timber, is that thing, company doing that?
So I've been, I've been talking with them, and.
Okay, they've been responsive, though?
Oh, yeah, I mean, they, you know, the paving issue, where it wasn't paved timely, and,
Yeah.
I made a phone call, and it was done within a couple of days, so.
There you go, you'll stay on topic with that.
Yeah, but I just wanted to give you a heads up.
Thank you.
And I have nothing else, if you have anything.
No, not for tonight. We're just keeping posting roads on there until another month or so.
Okay. And we're, we're gonna talk, we'll later on anyways, after, after we, get to calm down with the budgets and stuff. But my next year's project.
Are you project ready?
Okay, sounds good, all right, well, thank you, George, have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
All right, chief of police, I figured they could be out, chief, I don't know. You missed your turn in the alphabet, Mr. Clark, we're onto the police, we'll be back to you in a moment.
I got here late, so I don't mind waiting.
All right. I'm too parochial, I'm sorry, I can't go back.
I thought you wanted to go to non-public, though, don't you?
Yes.
Okay, um, personnel, all right, um, the motion to go to non-public, but not a personnel issue?
Motion to go to non-public for personnel issue.
Seconded?
All right, uh, moved and seconded, uh, roll call, Denise?
Yes.
Well, I guess the non-public session will be over, personnel issue.
And we're asking Caroline to, to stay for this.
Caroline, the chief would like you to stay?
Yes, stay.
Can we turn this, uh? I guess we're out of non-public session to take on here. Okay, so, uh, Denise, you have the first motion?
Yes.
Yes, I make, I make a motion.
Oh, well, let's not, let's not take a note, sorry, I didn't realize you were... Okay.
I'm making a motion that an officer in Rawnsburg Police Department goes on FMLA for medical reasons, effective December fifth.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded to allow one of our officers to go onto FMLA, backdated to December fifth, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. And, I guess, I guess I'll just announce that we're accepting the resignation of Officer Lejoy, effective, um, January fourth, twenty nineteen. And you have some others?
As a full-time officer.
As a full-time officer.
And remain part-time.
And he will be remaining with us as a part-time officer.
June fourth?
Yeah. June fourth, yes. Um, we actually have a certified police officer who was interested in, uh, working for us. I've got a conditional offer for probation employment here for the town to review, uh, starting salary of twenty-one fifteen per hour. The contract is good for three years, during his probationary time, he needs to, um, take the physical agility test, take his medical examination, he needs to, uh, take a polygraph examination, attend all the required training necessary as required by the Rawnsburg Police Department and New Hampshire Police and the Training Council. In the event that he leaves the employ of the town of Rawnsburg, uh, within three years goes to another police department, uh, he will have to return, uh, pay the town of Rawnsburg X amount of dollars, depending on how long he's actually worked here. And it's all listed in the contract there. So, there's a spot there for the board to sign, for myself to sign, for the applicant to sign, and...
So, what is the reason for, I mean, he's, is he...
Uniforms, equipment, training time, things like that, that's what the town will expend.
Anything that we put in other than salary is, is...
That includes salary.
That includes salary. But why don't you pay that salary if you've worked?
It's, it's always been because they agreed to work here, and if they decided to leave to go to another police department, it's different if they decide police work here wasn't for them, and they're gonna go become a landscape. But if they decide that they get their certification, whatnot, from the town of Rawnsburg, and they say, well, now I'm gonna go to another job because better benefits, better pay, or better conditions or whatever, um, we expended that amount to train that person, so...
Yeah, okay.
And to equip them, so we're entitled to, to receive that back.
So, after three years, we would have recouped our officers?
Correct.
Yeah, but we don't pay him for him to go to the academy, so you wouldn't count that, right?
But no, we're counting training time.
Training time.
Yes, yes.
But in-house training?
In-house training. And I neglected to mention the name, his name is Mitchell Brooks, uh, and he lives in Kittery, as I mentioned, he is certified, uh, went to the academy, uh, in September of twenty seventeen. Formerly a police officer with the city of Rochester, formerly a security officer for One Douglas Hospital, and he comes, uh, recommended by several folks.
Any questions for the chief, I have a discussion. Like a motion to hire, uh, Mr. Brooks at the rate of...
Twenty-one fifteen.
Twenty-one fifteen.
A, a move that we, um, extend an offer to Mitchell Brooks, twenty-one fifteen an hour.
All right, I'll second.
All right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all right, sign him if you let Mr. Brooks know that we'd like him to come work for us, please. And I'll even sign it so you can kinda read it.
And sometime in January, one of your meetings will have him come in and introduce himself to you and whatnot.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. The next item, Cachico Valley Humane Society, uh, they sent over the contract at the beginning of January first of twenty nineteen, uh, expiring December thirty-first, twenty nineteen. Basically, the difference between this and K-9 Chaos is we have no annual fee now to Cachico Valley, and, um, K-9 Chaos was charging us fifty, or charging us or the dog owner fifty dollars a day. Cachico Valley charges fifty dollars for the first day, then thirty dollars every day thereafter.
What was the, it was like a five hundred dollar annual fee?
It was a five hundred dollar annual fee just for the contract.
Right.
I know we talked about this briefly about a month ago, I have already notified K-9 Chaos that we're probably going to be going to Cachico Valley as of, uh, January first. So, I have a contract here that we need the signature from the board.
Do, do both of them have a twenty-four hour service?
Yes. Yes. They provide you with a key, and then you're going back door, put the doors in a certain area within the building.
Oh, okay, so you, you're able to do it.
After hours, so...
The reason we left Cachico, originally was 'cause they were bored, and the five hundred dollars K-9 was, well, what happened was when K-9 started charging everyone five hundred, everyone left Cachico, Cachico went, uh-oh, and said, we'll get rid of our fee, now everyone's going back.
Yeah, they had some administrative issues at the Humane Society for a very long time.
Yeah, one time they wanted to charge us twelve hundred dollars, and we said, you know, for two or three dogs, you're gonna bring there, you're...
Yeah, that makes sense, yeah.
And that's when K-9 said, well, we're right for five.
Yeah.
All right, um, how about a motion to, uh, go with a year-long contract with, uh, Cachico Valley Humane Society?
I make a motion that we accept the contract for the, um, for the annual shelter service agreement with Cachico Valley Humane Society.
Seconded?
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That's all that I have for you, anything for us?
Did you have a, a chance to connect with, um, what, Tom's here, with the, um, the nuisance, how, or anything for the housing standards?
I haven't received any feedback in time yet on it, so...
Okay, all right then, well, that answers that question, so we'll, we'll have to talk about that, um, and then we have, oh, where is that? No, I guess not, just to say Merry Christmas and thank you for...
All right, thank you. Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Yeah, we don't see you.
See you tomorrow, is it six?
Tomorrow, I think it's six, yeah. I'll send you his address tomorrow as well.
Oh, we can meet in my office, it's not the menu.
All right, Tom, come on up.
Yes, sir.
Oh, well, yeah, well, you're back in non-public, right?
Yeah, yes.
We'll be quick though, I think.
Yes.
No, no, all right.
All right, um, wow, junkyard, all right, let's start at the, the fun stuff, I guess, so we saw your letter.
Yeah.
Did everyone have a chance to take a look at Tom's letter? I had a question about it, though.
It's in the board folder.
Oh, even better, then I have to split you some. And it was...
Oh, look at that.
How about right on top, even better. I was like, what are we doing, okay, uh, please be advised that the Rawnsburg Select War has made the following determinations. A market from a grandfather used accordingly with the board will resume considerations regarding the renewal of their application. Weren't we, weren't we saying that, uh, it was conditioned upon them going to the zoning and planning board to resolve the towing issue?
Right, that's a separate issue, that's number two.
I know, but I've read that, it's, it's confusing to me, and, and I'm apparently in the know, so is it gonna be confusing to the person that guesses and doesn't understand? I guess that's why I'm, I'm asking.
Well, I, I did call Mo and explain what was going on.
Okay.
Um, and because of the input from the staff attorney at Municipal Association...
This way?
That's when, right.
That answers my question, and the attorney said this is the way we should do it, then...
Yeah. He even looked it up, he was very, very good, very generous with his time, he looked it up online as far as businesses, you know, the two separate ones and...
But, uh, the operator understands that, what he needs to do, that...
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
And I say, well, we should sign it and send it off, then?
And I gave the, uh, thirty days, because, I mean, after so many years, it'd be kind of unreasonable for us to...
Right, I think, yeah, it kind of threw me for a loop, of course, but I, I do, I think you're right.
They just, they, they understand that they have to completely move their trucks off of that property, right? That's the understanding, right?
Well, my suspicion is, when he gets this, he's gonna go to his attorney, and then they're gonna file an appeal, and that will, that will stay all action on the town's part until it's resolved, so that's...
So, he, he's able to do that business and be able to...
Of result, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that could be locked forever.
Well, I hope not, but...
But he's not, he's not following under the, the rules that we have, though, I mean, it's, he hasn't gotten permission to have that business there.
Correct, right.
But if he files an appeal, it stops.
Yeah, because of the fact he's been there, he said seventeen years, I don't, I don't, but, but it's been there, he said it's been there a long time.
He's probably owned the, the junkyard for seventeen years, but I don't, I don't think the house has been there that long, I don't know.
Well, that's the other thing, I mean, we can't prove one way or another, I mean, we all know it's been over a decade.
Yes.
I'm sure David Arco could tell you at the time, day and when they started.
More than likely, well, regardless of it's thirteen years or seventeen years. It's still longer than it should have been going on without following the proper procedure, so... All right, so I'd say we have Tom sign that, send it off, then, too, once we get the ball rolling. He, he can appeal, and then we'll just turn it over to our legal counsel and...
Yep.
We have to follow the proper procedures, so...
Can we go to the next subject?
Of course.
Okay, so...
Oh, I've got news about this too, but you go ahead.
The, the, um, the trailer on Rawns Road has installed, camper has installed two huge antennas, so I suspect they are living there. Have you not seen that one? I mean, it's still, it's going up with...
So, they've installed plastic over the windows, I'm assuming to winterize it.
Right.
Um, which I thought, well, maybe they just put that over to protect it for the wintertime, you know, but just give the boundary the doubt, and there were lights on. I saw it last night, there were lights on, and there's cars parked, um, with it, so...
All right.
But the one on Prospect Street, the cars are no longer there, and it does not appear to be...
Yeah.
Went by that last night, too?
Yeah, and they have tarp over the doors.
Yes, so I don't think they're coming.
But the, the antennas that are sticking up...
Clearly, there were people in it, I mean, I could see shadows of people inside it, I was like, I wasn't invited to check it out, I just saw, I was like, oh, right, like, oh, clearly, they're in there, so... All right, we'll start the ball rolling. Okey-dokey, and was there anything else that we had to, hopefully not, did I get anything?
No, 'cause the other one's in the hands of the lawyer, right? The one on...
The Rawns Road.
Run twelve rounds, yeah.
Perfect, all right, I can't think of any other, uh, is there anything, any others that we talked about, Caroline, and then, we would have put her on the list earlier today?
No.
What about, um, Foundry Street?
Oh, I don't know, have you done anything, gone down there?
Foundry Street, across from the, uh, the community gardens.
Four or five cars there.
Five hundred and thirty vehicles there.
I forgot that.
Parked upon the grass.
Right, I forgot that, I'll check that out.
I don't have the, I don't have the address, unfortunately.
I don't either. It's the last house, though, on the road before you get to mine.
I wrote it down last week and forgot about it. Plus, I'm only five hours a week, so, you know.
I don't want to, um...
It's not as bad as the others, so I was like, it's more of a priority.
We make friends everywhere we go, so...
Yeah.
I can't think of any other properties, but we'll let you know for your complaints.
Sure.
All right, is that it?
That's it.
Well, thank you, Tom, Merry Christmas.
You're welcome.
Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas, you as well. We'll see you.
Thank you for all your good work this year, too.
My pleasure.
All right, welfare, all right about that, whoa, no.
It's okay, well, yes, welfare, but before we go into non-public, um, I just wanna say out loud that Tom's had a good deal of time helping, um, someone who had a household problem that perhaps didn't meet code, and it led to not having heat, and it was a bit of a dire situation, and he straightened it out, so...
Well, thank you, Tom.
I wanted to let you know, because there are things that don't fall under your general, um, operational knowledge, and so...
Well, thank you for helping.
Yeah, he does, he's a lot of other things.
Not the time you're gonna be without heat, so...
Thank you, Caroline.
Thank you, bye.
We need to go to a non-public session?
Yes.
All right, I need a motion to go to a non-public...
Motion to go into a non-public session?
Seconded.
For purposes of welfare purposes?
Welfare, yep.
Seconded, moved and seconded?
Yes.
All right.
Did you want me to stick around, I'm, no, you're good?
You don't need to.
Okay. It is on.
So, we need a motion in case number twenty fifteen dash zero two zero.
Right, motion that we, um, allocate two hundred eighty-nine for fuel assistance.
That's seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a great night. I think that's all the departments are gonna come in, right? Uh, all the department heads for tonight. All right, moving right along to administration, so for town meeting, we have a couple of things we need to talk about, um, we have warrants, there are a few things we need to, one thing we should take up tonight, so we have, we have the avatar contract? I just need to see what the dollar amount is. The revaluation, um, um, warrant article, so every, um, every year, for the five years, the town, um, properties are, have book of reevaluation, and so we don't have to pay all at once, 'cause like, between seventy and eighty thousand dollars, we save a little bit, just like, at home, when you want to, uh, put something large, we try to save ahead and... At the right dollar amount, but I think it was on this, I think it's on this one. So, the total of, for everything is, at the end of the, of four years at this point, will be eighty thousand seven hundred and twenty, so we divide that by four, so twenty, twenty thousand one hundred and eighty dollars is what we should be saving for the next four years, um, to pay for the eventual reevaluation that we are required by statute to do every five years. So, we get a motion, put the motion on the floor, and we can talk about this more, but we need a motion to fund the warrant article relative to the revaluation fund at the amount of twenty thousand one hundred and eighty dollars.
I'll make that motion that we fund the reevaluation fund with twenty thousand one eighty.
All right.
Do you wanna indicate that's for the next four years, same amount?
Well, we actually do it every year, yeah.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, so the motion has been moved and seconded, so I'll, I'll repeat it just so everyone understands, the total amount for the five years of the contract, at the end of those five years, we're, we're in year four, because, we're not finished yet, but we're already in, within a year, um, would be eighty thousand, I forgot already, eighty thousand two hundred and seventy, no, it was just...
Seven hundred and twenty.
Seven hundred and twenty, thank you, yeah, eighty thousand, seven hundred and twenty, so we divide that by four, um, it was in twenty thousand one hundred and eighty, so at the end of the, the four years, we will have enough money to, to fund the reevaluation at the full amount. So, any other discussion? All right, are we ready? We're ready to vote on the amount to go into that warrant article, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So, the next of this is gonna be, there is a suggestion that we, we place on the warrant a recreation, I guess what revolving, revolving fund, I think, um, just had the request of the Recreation Committee, basically, so they can have, um, if they have money, to go into a non-oping fund, just like...
If they're incoming seats, they're expensive, and it would not offset taxes, it would go into the committees.
Which, um, we're, we're not saying it's gonna automatically happen, but we're, we're willing to put it on the warrant. You have a few details you need to figure out with, um, Carolina about wording, right?
Okay.
We don't, I don't think we're ready to vote on it tonight.
Okay, that's fine.
'Cause I don't have the wording, I think that's what she said, she wanted to work with you.
Okay.
So, and I said, sure, you go over Denise, I'd love for you to do that.
You can work on the agenda, uh, do it on the agenda and whatnot.
That's what I thought we would do, I just wanted it on here so we didn't lose sight of it. And then there's the, uh, police station town hall, you, but you all are meeting tomorrow night to, to finalize what you're gonna send to us, sort of proposal, or...
Yep.
Or if you're going to send us a proposal, it may be, whatever you're gonna, you're gonna decide, okay?
And hopefully, they'll have some recommendations of the repurpose of this building.
Okay, all right, so we will look forward to hearing that, and then we have budget as a, um, as a, or a weekly placeholder, if there's any updates as to, um, you have a budget committee meeting this week, right?
Yeah, we're, I'm presenting the town side of it, so I need to work with Caroline, make sure I have it all. Um, so...
Is there anything you need from, from me?
Well, yeah, you can watch me.
Wednesday night?
But if you can make it, that would be great, if not...
Okay.
But, um, that is Wednesday.
Okay.
It's six thirty.
Six thirty, okay. Have we had any, uh, we've sent the, um, is there anything else to say about the budget for now? The, um, budget committee secretary position is still posted, I know we sent, um, we had two, um, two folks from out of town that sent in resumes of sorts, um, that weren't terribly complete, but...
Yeah.
Which went us over to John Ordway, and John, um, I don't think was all, wasn't as impressive, we, we weren't impressed either, but we thought we'd forward them on to him, and I don't know if he, he didn't seem like he wanted to take action on them, they weren't, um, it seemed like, I mean, I... It seemed like they might have been, been folks that were, um, completing, um, requirements for job searches, yeah, like the Department of... Like the Department of Employment Security, it doesn't say that, but given the lack of any kind of qualifications for, for the position, I mean, it's not like it's, we need someone who can understand the conversation and take notes, but it didn't, it was very lacking, it wasn't, they weren't complete, let's just say that, but we thought we sent them on to him because we didn't have anyone else, so. But he didn't seem, he didn't seem interested either, so I think we're still looking for someone.
What's happening in lieu of having someone in this position?
Unfortunately, John isn't having, John and Bill have been, and he, Bill's been gone the last couple of meetings, but John is, I mean, he records them on his telephone, and then he works three or four hours transcribing them at night, and then having them. It's hard to do it when you're.
Oh, no, it's, yeah, it's really hard to do.
Yeah, it really is.
If you can't participate in the conversation.
Well, that's it, and he's the chair, so, you know, it's hard. I don't know, he's doing it, you know?
So you're recording them and then doing it?
Well, he records it on his phone, and then he takes someone else on his computer during the meeting itself, but it's not an easy.
But we should be paying him.
We should, absolutely.
So.
But, yes, I mean, he's doing it, but it's not something he wants to continue to do on top of trying to, you know, and coming on up to the delivery sessions and stuff, I mean, he shouldn't be doing it, he needs consciousness.
Okay, so we're going to need to send out another request to folks. All right, so I have another townwide email. I'll send, I'll get the original draft that we had and send that off again. Okay, so we have, next on the agenda, we have the Avatar contract to sign, so. Chair was a little more, was, earlier in the day, I guess, he had a conversation with Caroline, was a little more a little more upfront about the lack of, of what, sort of the, when, we used to have a select board member that was doing this and doing a very fine job at it, and then who just stopped, and didn't tell anyone he stopped, so. He was a little more, hedging his bets tonight, I think, of being a little more nice about it, but.
But how does that person know how to assess a building?
Oh, I don't know, I'm not even getting into that, but.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
But it just stopped, the bigger problem was it just stopped.
Yeah.
And so they thought it was still going on, and then, well, I don't know how we, I don't. We, the two remaining members didn't know whether he was doing it or not doing it, because we didn't know he was doing it. I just assumed that the assessing company we paid did it, but anyways. So that stopped, and then he's playing catch-up now, trying to find some, you know, find some of the errors that were there. That's my word, not his, but I would consider them errors. So, that kind of, that explains why we were using, why they started increase, they started an increase in hours. We didn't, because we thought, well, at least this member didn't think of an increase in hours, I thought we had more than we needed. We didn't, because we were, which begs that, it should be done professionally, in my opinion. It shouldn't be done by someone who may or may not know all the ins and outs of what they're doing, and it also shows that there needs to be consistency, I mean, if you have someone who's sort of volunteering as that part, doing it, that's great, I guess, but that doesn't mean that they always do it, and if things aren't getting done, things don't get recorded, things don't get on the assessing cards, and then people don't get taxed for improvements they've made to their property. And the converse is if they've torn something down, like a shed or a barn or something, they still get taxed on it, and we need to be accurate. Or you just say, oh, it's all town land, because they're not getting taxed anyways, well, it doesn't belong to the town, or people are wrong, it belongs to a completely different organization, that means your records aren't accurate, I mean, it's a.
Yep.
And not just, it's not just the cemetery, there are other parcels that we've been told about, so it's, we need to clean all this up. And it can't be one elected official, you, me, you, it should be the people that we're paying to do this, that, so.
I think my point was, so, earlier, though, is, you know, if the tax collector can assist, to help lower the amount of hours required.
Right.
I'm talking about not assessing, I'm talking about that, like the manual, putting building permits with whatever they were doing. If that can help, because, I mean, her hours were cut by the previous boards.
Yep.
And so, you know, if she has availability, we should think about that, if she, if she's willing to, you know, go back up in more hours, but. I mean, it's not a decision tonight, I'm just saying.
But there are things that she can help with the land use change test, and she's willing to do that.
Yeah.
Within the sort of the scope of hours she has now, she's been doing it.
Yeah.
But where she can, when, sort of where she's sort of been allowed to do it.
Yeah.
But, yeah, so she has the capability, for sure, and the willingness, so we should.
No, that's good.
Be utilizing that area of expertise that she has.
Yeah, I think so.
To make those changes, I would think, she's an employee, so there's, there can be accountability there, too. If it doesn't get done, and we're expecting her as part of her job description to do that, that person can be held accountable. If it's someone volunteering, you don't know if they did or if they didn't do it, because there's no one checking up, so. I mean, that's, that's what sort of, to me, where the breakdown of communication was, I mean.
Yep.
So it's, it needs to get fixed, so anyways, I would suggest that we go with the, with the yearly, it's and not the five-year contract, that way we can, we can save, we'll save separately for the revaluations, so we don't have that balloon payment in twenty twenty-two of eighty thousand dollars, eighty thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars.
Oh, it's the same year.
Right. So, if we, if we, if we go the yearly route, we just pay the yearly rate, which is the same, we just don't, we don't actually, sorry, we don't have a balloon payment of seventy-five thousand, because we still have to pay the five hundred and seven hundred and twenty dollars. This way, we can be saving towards it, so.
So is there savings to go with a longer term?
To set that backwards, sorry, that's what I meant, that's what, yeah, sorry, I set it backwards. So if we go the four-year contract assessing and cycle inspections and full update, as noted above with utilities, it's ninety, the full contract amount is ninety-seven thousand eight hundred and eighty. So if we go the one-year, twenty nineteen contract assessing with all the noted as above what I just read, it's five thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars a year. So let's see if we save.
Plus eighty seven twenty.
Right.
At the end.
I was going to say, that doesn't, yeah, okay.
So, we have, let's just see, it may be a slight advantage, so we'd have to, with the caveat that you can do a five-year contract, but it has to be contingent upon funding via the town meeting, because if the town meeting doesn't know, then you can't do it, so. For multi-year contracts, unless you get special permission from them, so that's why you have to have that caveat in there, so it's. So do we, we have to pay the, oh, wait a second, do we have to pay the full amount of ninety-seven thousand eight hundred, the year of the four-year contract? We've never, we've never actually done a multi-year, we've always done it yearly, so. At least since.
Because it's easier to sell a less dollar amount every year than it is to come up with the whole thing in one year.
Yeah.
Right, all right, well.
Let's see your point, Mike, I don't think we're prepared to.
But we need to have a assessing company in place, so I would, I would suggest we go with the one year, we'll need a motion.
I make a motion that will go, will you sign the contract for a year?
Oh, we'd actually, no, we don't need to, because all three of us have to sign, so. We all hang together. We have to have a motion when I have to hang separately, so, but, see, you're all putting your names down for it, at least one other person has to. We don't have to have a motion, because we're all signing it. If you don't want to sign, you just pass it on back to the person on my right, and hopefully that person signs it, and we don't have to dump them. But we can, that doesn't, this doesn't preclude if we still want to, this spring, if we want to investigate other avenues, we can serve with that. We are on.
Ambulance contract?
The ambulance contract, we finally had. We've already budgeted for the amount, that hasn't changed, we just finally got the language. So I will need a motion, because I think it's just me that signed this one. Yes, so I need a motion to enter into a, or is it two-year? Two-year agreement with York Ambulance for the amount of.
Thirty-six thousand a year?
Yeah. For thirty-six thousand dollars a year, contingent upon funding via town meeting.
I can make that motion that we enter into a agreement with York Ambulance for a two-year contract, thirty-six thousand a year.
Contingent upon approval, funding for town meeting.
Contingent upon funding. Second.
Okay, I was just thinking, seconded that. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed? One more down, all right. Check things off, okay, we have acceptance of Wentworth Road and Pleasant Street, we're going to table this, we, we have sent notification to Mr. Stevens, who's our, acts as our town engineer from Civil Consultants over in South Rowan. We have not heard back about his availability to do this.
Okay.
Yet, so we will not act on this until we hear back from him, and if we don't hear back from him, we need to find another consultant, another civil engineer to look at it, because I don't feel qualified myself to go look at it, speak for other view, but. Okay, town administrator job description. Everyone have a chance to take a look at this this week? All right, so what do people think? You have a lot in here, there's. And the responsibilities that, or rather, essential functions alone, there are twelve, twelve responsibilities that are, are pretty lengthy.
The only, the only notes that I made were, I didn't see a section in here about development and review of policies. I'm not even sure if that's something we would want to pin on the town administrator. I sort of feel like they would at least take a first stab.
So what, okay.
You know, personal policies and. Maybe it's covered.
No.
I didn't read this on my phone, so.
I don't, I'll read it again, I don't think so, I think it's. Researchers recommend and provides the Board of Selectmen, I should say Select Board, my apologies, with facts regarding town policies and procedures, finances, departments, contracts, budgets, insurances, and town building maintenance and repair, et cetera, implements policies by providing administrative directions to department heads and staff. Still would be on the Select Board to authorize policies and to promulgate policies, but when there needs, when a Select Board needs assistance in researching, or even making, if an issue arises, to make a recommendation to that board to come up with a policy, is the way I read this, but.
And that's what I would.
I mean, I still think it should be the Select Board responsible to do that, it would, so you go through all the rest of these twelve, it would free up time for boards to take on, take a more active role at meetings, to work along things like that, and not go through some of, I mean, some of the stuff that, what we just discussed tonight, so if we had a town administrator, when we have a town administrator, there will be, that person will come to the Select Board and make you a recommendation. It's not for the Select Board to sit here and read all the documents at the meeting, to, they will, the Select Board will make that record, will make the actual decision, but there will be information provided, and one of the things for the, for the town administrator to do, if you look at, number eight, attends all Select Board meetings, and the meetings of other board and commissions as required by the Select Board to provide input and information back to the Select Board, both within and outside of the organization, formulates weekly agendas with the Select Board, and provides the Select Board with pertinent supporting data, coordinates and schedules public hearings, and coordinates of state and local rules and regulations. So you would have, you would have someone present at the meeting to discuss and to present information, so the boards will be reacting to the, to the most recent and up-to-date information possible. And will have the ability to ask questions, and not outside of a meeting, but in a televised meeting, where you can get this exchange of information for all three members and the town administrators, so, which is important, that everyone has the information at the same time. Any other comments or concerns, I mean, there's a lot in here that you would be asking of this individual, so.
Well, you know, I think, just, I mean, this is, this is a really busy job, this is what is expected. But also, we should, after a certain period of time, and his position has been held, have the right to review and modify.
Most definitely.
As we need to, to make sure that it is a, because, to me, it looks like more than a forty-hour work week, but, but it depends, you know.
Well, that's just at certain times of year, it may be.
Exactly, exactly, like, I'm just saying it's.
There's a mistake on the front, or is it a status full-time, it should say full-time salary, it shouldn't say hourly.
Are we doing salary?
Well, that's my suggestion, and it shouldn't be an hourly position, it should be a salary position, because it is more than a forty-hour a week job, I mean, on certain times of the year, it will be, I mean, during budget season, the individual will need to attend, there still would be, clearly would be a representative from the Select Board representing the board on the Budget Committee, but I hear that there were, in most communities, not this one, but in most communities in this day and age, that have an administrator, the chief of police doesn't go present his budget to the Budget Committee. The chief of police, the department head, works with the town administrator and comes to the Select Board and presents the budget. That budget is then presented by the town administrator to the Budget Committee. It's not up to the police chief, the elected fire chief, to come present his or her budget, it's the town, the Select Board's budget that they're sending to the Budget Committee that then becomes the Budget Committee's budget, it's not the individual department head's budget, so.
But, on the flip side, being serving on the Budget Committee for so many years, I have to say that having department heads be part of it is getting your information faster, because they're right there.
They should be, they should be present.
Yeah.
They should be present and available to ask, answer technical questions, but it should be a consistent process. Every single person, every budget that's presented, in my mind, every budget that's presented, should be consistent, in the same consistent way, by the one person, and then if there are technical questions that he or she cannot answer about, I don't know, a pumper truck, or whatever, then you have the department head present to answer those questions.
Yeah, because I don't think they should not be there, but I think that, you know, but I think consistency is definitely.
This is, I mean, these are changes that are long overdue, these are things that, that were, there was a lot of, there's been a lot of resistance over the years, and I don't know why, I mean, people like to control the flow of information. And information shouldn't be controlled, it should, in a municipality, it should be readily available to everyone.
Great.
And, and having one individual exercise all the power and control everything is not the way things should be going. There should be professional administrative staff that aids in the running of a community, I mean, it's so that the information can get out to people and not have secret meetings inside rooms where the door is closed, I mean.
I wasn't finding that.
No, not you, I'm just saying, I'm just remembering that, so.
Oh, okay, I just think that department heads have a lot, they should be there as well, as a team.
Most definitely, oh, no, 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 that's not, I don't know, I'm just. Most definitely, oh, no, 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 that's not, I don't know, I'm just. It's just not you at all.
No, I get it.
Okay, so are there other suggestions on, on things that may need to be added to this lengthy list? Or are there things you think aren't appropriate that should be taken off?
No, I think everything was appropriate, it's just it's so hard to judge if it's a, you know, how much it is. But of course, once you get in, you get someone that's taking on those responsibilities, it's gonna, it's gonna get better. But you gotta do it, you know? But I just want the right to modify if necessary.
In my mind, you should start out with this as the goal. And after a probationary period, you can say this is what worked well, this is what didn't work at all, this is where we can make improvements. Perhaps you shouldn't be responsible for this, there should be someone else responsible, either the board or, you know, we, we've, in the proposed budget, we've said that there should be an administrator and, and a bookkeeper, right? So are there certain things that the bookkeeper admin, administrative assistant should be taking on versus this position? Are there things of this position should be taking on that that person shouldn't have on their plate? I mean, this probationary period will, will, will afford you the opportunity to figure that out.
Exactly. You know, and it could be, you know, and all the kinds of person who gets hired, that bookkeeper and the skills that come with that, you know, so.
It's, yeah, for sure. I mean, there's no, there's no secret formula at the moment, I mean, there's, there's, there's targets. And whether or not you can, you can, you can make, meet those targets, or you'll figure that out over time. What I would suggest is, once the person is brought on board as part of their, their their offer of employment, the letter that is issued for the person, they should say, you know, obviously it's contingent upon a probationary period and, and subject to review after, at the end of that probationary period to see what worked and what didn't work. Whether we need to expand responsibilities, duties, scope of work, or retract some of it. So, yeah, I think it's, in the first few years, the opportunity to sort of figure out exactly what works and what doesn't work. I mean, but clearly what doesn't work is having one individual try to do everything.
Right.
And, and it just doesn't work.
It's a good start.
Yeah. It is a place to start. So, do we want, so as we move forward through the, through the budget process, people are gonna wanna know what exactly we expect from this position? Are we prepared, so first of all, one thing we need to fix is this, it shouldn't say hourly, it should be salary. It should say full-time salary. So there's one thing that needs to be fixed. Is there anything else that people wanna change? There's some, so on the, on number nine, I made some changes today, or yesterday, I don't remember, that are different from what was emailed to you previously. So it says, attends conferences, seminars, and meetings relating to municipal management. And I had added, as directed by the select board. Makes presentations at public meetings and local groups as requested by the select board. I don't, I, previously it just said makes presentations at public meetings and local groups as requested? Well, it should be at the direction of the select board, not just the, the local group says, I want you to come. Well, the person may or may not have their time. It really, it'd be managed by the, by the board in my mind, so. So that's the only other change from what you saw previously.
No, good.
We'll get an electronic copy for the record.
So would you imagine that this position, so purchase orders and things of that nature go through this person? And it comes out of the hands of the select board? Or this person then comes to the select board with a pile of POs just to approve?
I think they must, I, my expectation is that they would have a level of authority.
Okay.
You know, within the, within the department's budgets and, because they're gonna be very deep into the budgets. And I think that they should have a level of authority and not have to come with us for two, three hundred dollar.
Right.
You know, even, even if it's five thousand or whatever. It has to be under your capital expense line, or your capital, or, or something.
Yeah, well, so.
You know, but. I, I'm sure we could agree to a dollar amount, but I, we don't have to say all of it.
As part of the, the purchasing policy that we have, we revise that. And currently, department heads can, can do up to, up to two hundred, two hundred and fifty without coming for us for a PO. So that would just need to be revisited as well. So I mean, so the, so the bones are in place for, of the policy, we just need to revise it. But so it'd be, so provides administrative direction to all department heads and supervisors, town office, clerical, bookkeeping, and building maintenance staff. Let's see, is there another one? Building maintenance staff. Coordinates the work of code enforcement, town attorney, assessing, and all other contracted services providers in accordance with town policy and the goals and objectives of the select board to by ensuring the quality of the organization's accounting and financial reporting, assessing and information management function. Currently, there isn't one individual charged with all of that, so. From what we just heard earlier today, what I heard earlier today, and what we heard from chat tonight, that it was a breakdown clearly in the assessing portion. Let's see. Press the mouse if it says directly what you're asking.
And, and I'm not sure, I don't remember. I'm not sure.
I don't think it had a dollar amount.
No, that, that I know for sure. So if we're, if we're comfortable with this, we can, we can share this publicly then. That this is the work, the document we're working off of, what we'd like to see as responsibilities that would go along with hiring someone in this position. I think it, it shows one, the level of the complexity of the position, but also I think illustrates why the position is, is needed. There's twelve, in my mind, twelve very good reasons as to why this position is long overdue. You just have to read through it and see. It's not, um, it, it is, there's a lot, there may be more here than one person can actually handle.
Yeah, that's kind of what popped into my head, is this, is this doable?
Right, and like I said, it just needs to be revisited after a certain, maybe three months and then six months or whatever.
That can be part of the, the offer letter, right? They say we, we'll do a review in three, six, nine, and twelve months. And that's, that's what should happen. You know, the other nice part of this being the reviews, I think that's in here, about reviewing with department heads. Because there are departments that don't get reviews. The police, currently the police department is the only department that has a process by which employees are reviewed on an annual basis. All the employees should go through an annual review process, and there are, yeah. There are folks that have wondered why, why it hasn't happened in the past, but there, there isn't a policy in place for it. So that would be one of the functions of making sure that that actually starts to happen, so. And the select board would have to work to develop those policies, but we have a, a way to start doing that, so. Anyway, so are we comfortable then with?
Yep.
The public side of this?
There are several places where it's a board of selectmen, so.
I need to change that. Alright, so why don't I go, I'll, yes, I'll go back and change that. Several say board of selectmen, some say select board.
Yep.
I can change that, so.
Yep.
Alright. We can send this off and then revisit it again at the first of the year, but I wanted us to at least have, going into the new year with something to be working on. Change. Alright, it's perfect. Put that aside then. Alrighty, thank you for that. Next, policy review. So I worked on the, the request of the Joint Law Committee having a tobacco-free policy. This is what we've come up, I've come up with, it's policy twenty eighteen dash zero one. I'll just read it, it's not that lengthy. The purpose of this policy is to protect the health, safety, and comfort of employees and visitors. The Town of Rollinsford recognizes that tobacco use is the single most preventable cause of death and disease in the United States. The Environmental Protection Agency has classified secondhand smoke as a Class A carcinogen, a substance known to cause cancer in humans for which there is no safe level of exposure. Therefore, the Town of Rollinsford has designated the following areas as tobacco-free areas. Town Hall, Police Department, Fire Department, Highway Department, and Transfer Station, and the property on which they are located. I didn't put Public Library because we don't own that property, but I would suggest if we're going to adopt this policy, we'd board it onto the Board of Library trustees so they can initiate a similar policy, working with the, with the, the property owner that they went from. Okay, definitions. Remember, I didn't create all of this myself, this was, I worked off what was submitted by the Joint Laws Committee. Definitions. Property means facilities curb to curb, including offices, grounds, adjacent sidewalks, parking lots, ramps, town-owned vehicles, and employees' vehicles parked on town-owned property. Tobacco product means any product that is made from or derived from tobacco or that contains nicotine that is intended for human consumption or is likely to be consumed whether smoked, heated, chewed, absorbed, dissolved, inhaled, or ingested by any other means included but not limited to. A cigarette, a cigar, a hookah, pipe tobacco, chewing tobacco, not for snooze. Tobacco product also means electronic smoking devices and any component or accessory used in the consumption of tobacco products such as filters, rolling papers, pipes, liquids used in electronic smoking devices, whether or not they contain nicotine. Tobacco product does not include drugs, devices, or combination products authorized for sale by the U.S. Department of Food and Drug Administration as those terms are defined on the Federal Food, Drug, and Cosmetic Act. In other words, if they have like a nicotine pack because they're trying to quit smoking, that is a lot. Procedures. No use of any tobacco product shall be permitted on the grounds or within the facilities of the Town of Rollinsford mentioned. Employees shall not use tobacco products of any kind while on duty or while in a town-owned vehicle or while on their personal vehicle, while on town property. Employees and visitors will be informed of the Town of Rollinsford tobacco-free policy through signs posted in all affected locations. Maybe similar to what the school has. We don't have to re-crypt the wheel. Town of Rollinsford will assist employees who want to quit smoking by helping them access smoking cessation, I should say tobacco cessation programs and materials. Any visitor violating this policy will be asked to discontinue use. Any visitor who is unwilling to discontinue use will be asked to leave and is subject to law enforcement notification. Any employee violating this policy will be subject to established disciplinary procedures. Signed into effect, I don't know, December seventeen, twenty eighteen by the board of selectmen, select board. So, what do we need to add it? Besides the fact that it should say tobacco products, not smoking, cessation, should say tobacco cessation.
I think it's good.
Again, this is from the Joint Laws Committee, this is what they would like to see. Well, I just changed it to sort of modernize some of what, I mean, the bones are all what they had, not.
So one point of clarification, if an employee is smoking in their car and pulls up to come to work, I should probably quote it out. They, they can put it out when they're parked in the parking lot? I, I don't wanna split hairs here, but.
What, what they, what they don't wanna see is employees going out and sitting in their car in the, in the back.
That's, that's exactly what I was.
So I didn't change that, that was what they, what they had. I don't, I'm not sure what town they got it from, but I just, I updated what a tobacco product is. This is now the, sort of the, the standard definition these days. It's always subject to change, but. And what else did I change? Clearly, I didn't change the smoking cessation program, I meant to say tobacco cessation program, that was what they suggested. I added, if someone's unwilling to discontinue use, that they'll be asked to leave. I mean, that's, they didn't have that, they just said they would be asked cursed, they would be asked nicely to discontinue use. Like, well, of course, that's the goal, they would be asked nicely to discontinue use, but if they're unwilling to do that, there has to be another step. And that's to contact law enforcement, and they refused to leave, and that's. There was a question as to whether or not we should include town parks. We are empowered to, to do this on town facilities like the Town Hall and places like that. Outdoor, we are empowered to do that, but we should go on the warrant. So, because we're not, we're not a council or a select board, so what do you do? That, that would need to go to town meeting. Why we're allowed to say you can't smoke inside the police department and not out inside the town park? I don't know, but just go by what I'm told by the municipal associations, so. Alright, so is there anything else we need to change? Can check something off for the, for the, for the Joint Laws Committee. Alright, so then, what I would suggest is we make this change to say tobacco cessation program, that's on the second page. And having a public hearing on it. Is what I think we should.
Do you have to have a public hearing?
We don't have to, I think we should.
Good point.
I just think it's right.
Probably should send it to all department heads as well, just to make sure that.
Well, they're, they're all represented on the Joint Laws Committee. And they're the ones that came up with it, so I can send it back to them so they can take a look at it.
No, I'm just thinking, okay, so I don't know how many firefighters smoke, I don't know how many transfer station people smoke. I mean, they, they need to.
I don't know.
Make sure that they have the right tools to be able to tell these people that they can no longer smoke on town property.
I agree.
And define property. You know, like the fire station, is property on the grass? Is it property on a cemetery thing? Or is it just the pavement and?
Curb to curb, including.
No curbs over there.
Offices, grounds, adjacent sidewalks, parking lots, ramps, town-owned vehicles. And their own vehicle if they're in the parking lot.
But, I'm just throwing it out here, but the, heading towards the softball field, that's, that's cemetery then.
Yep.
Is that also part of it?
That property is governed by the Cemetery Board of Trustees.
So, that's, that's my point. That's the only, yeah, that's the only, my only point because it's, that, that building is the only one that I said that this come iffy areas. Because in that is the grass over by where the big rock is and, you know.
They have a, well, that might be easier to solve because, well, on the rock side, if that's town property, they're not allowed to be out there.
Okay.
So, but on the cemetery side, I think they already have a sign that says posted, no, no tobacco use there. Pretty sure, I saw that driving by somewhere, I thought I saw it. Because there was, there was someone smoking on, in the inside part of the fence while kids were doing batting practice or something. And I thought, okay, well, it wasn't like, I don't know if it was a coach, but they weren't, it wasn't like, it looked like it was just like a, a, a father or daughter out there doing it, it wasn't like, it looked like an organized thing, I don't know, but. Then I saw the Giants, well, the sign that said, no smoke, and I thought, well, clearly that person can't read. Or just chose to ignore it, but, but again, it's not ours, so.
Yeah.
It's up to the cemetery addresses.
Other than that, I'm good with it.
Okay, so we should send it off and we'll let the Joint Laws Committee know that we're gonna do this?
And so then you're, what you're gonna do is you're gonna get it modified and then we sign it at the next meeting, or?
After we have a public hearing.
Oh, after a public hearing, okay.
Let's see. It's not gonna be New Year's Day, I'll tell you that much. See if we can get it scheduled for the, what's today? I'll tell you the time, the fourteenth of January? Just coming at six?
For a public hearing here? Oh, you're gonna hook it on to the same day? Okay, that's fine.
I'm not gonna.
Yeah.
So. Let's see, a public hearing. Okay, now the answer, I just want to visit a quarter. It's on home. Hopefully the, I hope the Joint Loss folks that asked for this will come and tell us exactly why they, why it's missed you. All right. So, set the clock on January fourteenth. Put that back, I'll give that back to you so we, I'll probably edit. I'm going to come tomorrow and get Caroline. And, uh, public hearing. Scheduled. Four, one, fourteen, nineteen. All righty. Town administration standing. I, I meant to erase this, what's this Budget Committee? Kind of have it up here now, sorry. Didn't do it again for a second week in a row, maybe next week, or the week after. So, what do we have for activities this week, speaking of Budget Committee?
On our night, I have the police station meeting at six here, and I have Budget Committee at six thirty on Wednesday.
And six thirty at the fire station?
Oh, that's right. When is that?
Thursday.
Thursday, six thirty at the fire station, which the Select Board is welcome to come, and the Budget Committee has been invited to do an open house and look at equipment and understand what, what the partnership's asking for.
So, he's available to answer questions.
He's going to be there as well as some of his staff.
I will, I am planning to be in there.
Okay, so, will you be there as well?
I shall. Now, there, there would be four nights this weekend, though.
All right, so if that's going to be the case, and I'm going to have Caroline notice that there's going to be two Select Board members there. They'll be a majority of the Board President and stuff. We don't run a file.
Decisions, though.
But we're still, I don't want anyone.
It's not a meeting, though, for us, it's just of being together, potentially.
I mean, it's one thing if we all go to the breakfast, but that wasn't coordinated. I mean, we just happen to show up and have, I mean, I don't call you all until I am going to have pancakes some certain time. But you may be there because your pancakes are there and you want to have breakfast with them. That's different than.
Does that have to be posted as an open house for the Budget Committee?
Yes, it should be.
Really?
Mm-hmm. If there's a majority of them there, then yeah. Indeed. And I've got Historical Committee tomorrow, here at seven. But we're going to meet over in the, the sidewalk because you'll all be here for the Space Next Meeting.
Did anyone break back to Karen Dan Dor?
Yep, I did.
Oh, okay.
And let her know that, so when she wanted to write the article about.
Oh, the deer, what deer?
I sent him, I forwarded her request on to Mark, and Mark obviously responded because he was in the article.
Yeah.
She had a deadline, I put a new term on it. That's because they're all working, so. But, yeah, I responded to her. And Mark said, I've already responded, she already interviewed.
Oh, okay.
I'm going, well, great. What else? Okay. Building permits, let's go over.
The building permit. Like, one?
One.
Yep. So, building permits. Four thirty-two Portland Ave, Dover rentals.
So, it's Dover, I mean, that's a permit number, what?
Permit, two thousand eighteen dash one-one-two, fee thirty-five dollars.
Okay, so permit twenty eighteen dash one-one-two, four thirty-two Portland Ave, what are they doing? Alterations, it says. Oh, it's, it's to do with the gas line, okay. Mr. Clark has reviewed it to thirty-five dollar fee for, what they're, they're swapping out the tanks, all right. All right.
Thirty-five dollars?
Thirty-five dollar fee, I guess. Need to sign it, I have to go back to Miles to sign.
Okay. Purchase order fifteen seventy-eight, make a motion. It's to digital, I don't know, can you read what that word says?
Ink.
Ink, digital, okay. For, doesn't look like, look to me, but it sounds like, seems to know. Four hundred and eighty dollars for six boxes of town window envelopes.
Yeah, for sure, but I don't know about the word ink, but whatever. It's for envelopes.
Yep.
Town envelopes.
Second.
Okay, purchase order fifteen seventy-eight has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Get more envelopes.
Okay. I move purchase order fifteen sixty-seven to the Rollinsford Post Office in the amount of one ninety-seven fifty-eight for every door direct mailing, delivery of senior interest survey to all mailing addresses and putting P.O. boxes in the town zip code.
I'll explain that, so.
Second.
Okay. So, this is the, the Recreation Committee has budgeted.
Three hundred.
Three hundred dollars, right? Yeah, to do outreach to senior to see if interest in, this was budgeted last year. We're getting it under the wire here from this year. To do a survey of, of what they'd like to see for option for Rec, for the Rec Department to offer to seniors. So, it's not just to kids. Okay, so purchase order, that's what, so that's what it's for. Purchase order fifteen sixty-seven has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, any other discussion?
What was the move?
Of one ninety-seven fifty-eight.
Give it to me or has it come out?
You might want to consider the next one from Rec, same time.
Okay. Well, we got to do. To purchase order fifteen sixty-six to Staples in the amount of a hundred and ninety-eight dollars for six hundred of the community.
Okay, so which is.
Then that's too much money.
Then that's too much money.
We need to come up with a hundred dollars. So, we've already moved, all right, why don't you rescind your, your, your motions of move fifteen sixty-seven? We'll do fifteen sixty-six first.
How's that? Okay. What is that funded by?
Well, there's not going to, why, we're not going to pay for postage if we're not going to pay for the postcard, right?
Oh, okay, sure. So, I rescind my motion on.
And yours is your second.
I rescind my second.
So, why don't we, we'll start with this.
Okay.
We can have the conversation that way. I didn't realize it was two of them.
I move purchase order fifteen sixty-six to Staples for a hundred and ninety-eight dollars for six hundred community senior citizen survey.
Second.
Okay. So, my first question is why are we going to Staples and not going to B and B Printing? That always gives us a better rate than Staples. That's my first question. But it's okay because I'm now seeing that it was a volunteer that is doing this for us and may not have known. So, that's okay. That answers that part of the question for me. Okay. So, you've moved and you've seconded. So, this is my suggestion. We can, we can authorize, we can both authorize up to the hundred and ninety-eight or just that two hundred for, for the purchase order. And we can ask that we, if it's cheaper, we can ask that it be done at, would be done at B and B because they are cheaper over this.
Can we explore, in-house printing?
We could do that, too. Yes, I'm. Go through what's, what's that? Oh, yeah, I mean, we can.
We have that wonderful printer here.
Yeah.
It does card stock.
Hold on a second, yes, Sylvia.
I was directed by the local postmaster to check the Staples because they have the printing sizes and a whole packet of information based on what every door direct mailing.
Requires.
Requires. And they could put the postage on for us at that point. However, for us to do the every door direct mailing through them would be five hundred and twenty to five hundred and fifty dollars based on our need. So, that puts us even further over budget. We are willing to look into other options, like, but that's why we went to Staples.
Where are you getting the number six hundred, just based on?
There may be, I'm not sure if it's on there. Staples said the easiest thing to do, one of the paper sizes that every door direct mailing can be is a eight, is a four and a half, four and a quarter by eleven. So, it's an eight and a half sheet of paper.
Folded.
Cut down the middle. And the simplest way for them to print it and the cheapest print is for them to print six hundred and cut them down the middle, then you have twelve hundred. And you have eleven hundred and ten mailboxes and addresses to the town of Rollinsford. And then you have the ones on Calwin and like Mary Street that are Somersworth and Dover addresses that we could hand-deliver and we would have those.
So, they're not all necessarily senior citizens?
It would be.
They're going to every.
They're going to every door because we do not know which addresses have senior citizens at them.
Cheap, just to do every door direct. So, this would be my suggestion. You can authorize, I mean, the post office is the post office, that's what it's going to cost. We already know that. You've already gotten that from, from the postmaster, from Kevin? He's told you it's going to cost.
Uh, there's an attachment there that she signed off on the price.
So, we, the town typically uses B and B because we get a better rate and she's well acquainted with every door direct as well.
So, I can look into them if we have an amount that I can go up to. The Rec Committee did meet on Sunday and took a vote on putting these purchase orders in. And their suggestion was, the motion made, I brought a copy of it for the Board by one of the chairs, was to move ahead with it and take the three hundred dollars from the senior line and possibly a hundred dollars from our winter budget line, which we will not fully expect.
I'm not worried about finding that hundred dollars, but thank you, I appreciate it.
And the other discussion that we had was to possibly do part of it this year, do the printing now and the mailing later, but there was concern about a clean budget starting in two thousand and nineteen.
Are you worried about finding a hundred dollars?
No, but what I'm worried about is, is taking the advice from the postmaster about where to print them.
Yeah.
I think we need to do the best that we can do financially, so I would definitely look into B and B because that's where a lot of stuff comes from here, as well as campaign things and those kind of things. So, I would double-check it before, Staples is one of the highest in the area.
Right.
So, and, you know, he's just looking for.
We appreciate you doing, I appreciate, you did the legwork and thank you for that, Sylvia. I mean, you're, you're a volunteer doing this and we do appreciate that, but honestly, they are more expensive than.
Yeah.
We've gotten lots of things printed over the years, and Michelle at B and B has always been the fairest price in the area.
So, we can certainly look into B and B, and I can do that this week.
Yeah. I said not to exceed price would be what I would do for the book.
If you tell her that, 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 she will meet or exceed, she always does. She does, always does, so. Plus, we're supporting a local business, so it's always nice to. All right. So. This is what I'm, so. So, please check with prices with B and B Printing first. So, we have, purchase order fifteen sixty-six was moved and seconded in the amount of up to a hundred and ninety-eight dollars. So, we just ask that you check with B and B first before you actually go to Staples. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
I'll move again fifteen sixty-seven in the amount of one ninety-seven fifty-eight to the Rollinsford Post Office.
Second.
Don't put that, I don't know why, but it doesn't matter. All right, any discussion about the printing, I mean, the, the postage? That one, I think it probably. Fifteen sixty-seven moved and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So, thank you, Sylvia, for doing all this running around.
Oh, no problem.
And I think it's important that, just from my perspective, that we have a little more diversity in what the Recreation Department offers in town. So, thank you for doing that. Say that if someone takes advantage of the children's things, but it's important that other folks in town also have opportunities. All right.
Okay.
And thank you for providing the minute. What else we got?
Inventory penalties. Garrison players is exempt just there.
Yep. Yes, they're non-profit, they're exempt. We'll abate them back their amounts of ten dollars. Well, we'll have to sign it, so, we all, three of us sign it, so we don't have to. We don't get a motion. If two of us don't sign it, it doesn't happen. Did we vote last week, then? All right, can I have a motion? I want to be consistent. Motion to abate Garrison players the amount of ten dollars against their property taxes for inventory penalty.
Well, this is the inventory penalty, that's not, that's their inventory form that they didn't fill out.
Yeah.
They would, they'd have to fill out an inventory form, nobody lives there.
They, well, it's a.
That's, well, they don't have to fill it out because they're non-profit.
But they also don't live there.
They do not, no.
It's a.
That was an error, I would think.
Yeah, that's why we're going to abate them there.
Oh, okay.
But we need a motion to, to do that.
I make a motion that we reverse Garrison plays the ten dollars for inventory penalties that they shouldn't have received.
Second.
So, yeah, it says on it Garrison players is exempt as a five oh-three C and should not have received a P A dash twenty-eight form. All right, so it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
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 We're voting on these last week, but it's also very late in the day.
I don't know. Maybe we did, but let's just sign it.
Well, okay.
Elton suspended apparently.
Louise Treadwell indicated on her tax bill that she had sent in the form, but we don't have record of receiving it. Move that we suspend the inventory penalty of forty-five dollars.
Yeah, you should always check the tax.
Wow.
Mine, what, they already got paid by escrow, it's on, on there, but it wasn't on there, I actually did check. But I remember turning mine in and delivered it. When it was hand-delivered to me. Okay. All those in favor of abating the penalty to Ms. Treadwell, the amount of forty-five dollars, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
I'm not sure that got seconded. Did you second it?
I'll second it, okay.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. That's it, alright.
Okay, I have a invoice that needs approval for annual organizational support donation, two hundred dollars for the Southeast Watershed Alliance.
So, why don't we, you're moving, you want a second, we can talk about.
I'm moving it, yeah.
Seven, okay. So, we received an email about this, they, so these folks work with. Work with the other group, the Seacoast Police Water Alliance, that we're a member of. They developed the software that we're using to help with filling out the M S four, apparently. So they would like to know if we would support them with a two hundred dollar donation.
It's two hundred, not three?
Two hundred dollars.
Two hundred.
Is there any discussion as to, I mean, we're gonna read the email, make sure we're on the same page here.
Yeah, we're saying two hundred.
Creating the ranking matrix or something, Paul, cause I'll send an email about it, cause he attended the meeting, what they were asking for. Sure, make sure we're on.
It's two, it's two hundred.
Yeah, yeah, I know it's only two hundred dollars, but I just wanna make sure we're. But that's why. So it was, it's a, it's stuff that was on top of what. The coalition had. Had already worked on, it was, it was, yeah, to develop the software, I guess, so. Is there, if I moved and seconded, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, alright. Pay donate two hundred dollars towards the record. There's that.
Okay, I move purchase order one five six five, one five six, yep, for Doodle Bugs. This is for twenty-six fused glass ornaments, it was a program that they did down at Doodle Bugs for Recreation Department. The payment that is, it's coming out of the grant money that was left over.
Oh.
This is the other enrichment type class that they were putting on.
Yep.
For two hundred and sixty dollars, and it happened yesterday, or Friday.
They're two.
It was Friday and yesterday, so.
Second.
Just paid for out of a grant.
Well, there was a grant, they had remaining money, and that's where they spent the money.
It's not coming out of.
And it's gone, right?
Town funds.
There was eight dollars left.
Well, they'll be in those.
Okay, so first order fifteen sixty-five has been moved and seconded, any other discussion? Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, alright. Thank the generous folks that gave the grant, and the nice people who do it. And those that actually went out to get the grant.
So, this is a letter from Casa, they're just thanking us for our donation and sending us a receipt. We sent them five hundred, was it?
I think so, yeah. It's one of our.
Five hundred, yeah.
Organizations that we are part of.
Um, this was a letter, Caroline, I think, had sent us a heads up on this, this is from the Robert Hap, this is a temp agency, informing us that their rates are going up by one percent, affected January fifth, so, but she. Do we need to take action on that proposal issues? Did you read her email?
What was our move? I don't remember.
I think she was just telling us how much it was gonna be for our increase.
Right, and we weren't gonna go over. Into the new year, we weren't gonna, we weren't gonna go past that certain deadline, so it shouldn't affect the budget.
Yeah, 'cause, yeah.
What we had, what we had originally thought, so.
Okay, alright, then that's okay, so it's just like an F Y I?
Yes.
Alright, and then, we have a contract here to be signed, I don't know if you wanna read this all first, or whatever, but this is Dumais in Perlin, certified by public accounting, what their understanding is of what they're going to do with the audit. At the year end to seven thirty-first, so do you wanna read it before you sign it? Okay, so, happy reading.
Thanks.
Okay?
Typically doesn't change from year to year.
Yeah, and there's a copy in there as well.
Some questions, we have to have this signed. Oh, meeting again?
Not for two weeks.
Alright, but we're meeting on the first week of the year, alright, we're meeting on the third?
We are?
Yep, at six o'clock, we were to.
What day of the week is that?
Thursday night.
For what?
Uh, select ward meeting.
Just a regular select ward meeting?
Not, an abbreviated one, though, we're not having a full meeting, it's gonna be if departments need to come, and of course, the public is something they won't bring up.
Oh, okay.
Just for department, have to be agreed to, I don't know, last week, we were.
Okay.
So we'll sign it that night. If they have a poster note, I can just stick on there, but.
Yep.
I'll come in tomorrow and read it. Actually, you know what we can do? If, if, if there's consensus, what I can do is, coming, I'm coming in tomorrow anyways, I will read through it tomorrow and talk to Caroline and see if there's any changes. And substantial changes from out here, if there aren't any, I'd like authorization to sign it tomorrow.
I'll make a motion for that.
Should I second it?
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, maybe just take a poster on this one.
Oh, you want a poster?
Sorry. Get the thought a little bad.
This is a letter from the Department of Transportation to you, letting you know of an upcoming highway safety project to improve safety on the roadway curves. Have you read this?
Nope.
Do you wanna, let me read it?
Oh.
Oh, okay. The curve sign project will be on state roads in your municipality, as well as state roads in all towns and cities in New Hampshire DOT Maintenance District Six. The same safety improvement is being implemented statewide. In New Hampshire, DOT will design, install curve signs, and, what's a Chevron?
It's an Arrow.
Oh, okay. Based on, okay, based on the measurements taken while driving each curve, only those curves meeting certain criteria will be signed. This is required by the Federal Highway Administration. Most importantly, providing appropriate curve warning signs is a proven safety improvement to reduce runoff of the road. Reduce runoff of the road crashes, which just. Fortunately, results in serious injuries and fatalities on roadway curves.
So if there's sharp corners, they're gonna put up a sign?
Yeah.
And Chevron's on the road?
Most of the signs will, will be installed in two thousand nineteen.
It's a probably the wrong time of year to try to put a sign up or paint the road, but.
Yeah, yeah, so that's just like F I, F Y I.
Well, thank you, D O T.
Yep. Michael again.
Oh, aren't I lucky?
Notify the town of New Hampshire Department of Transportation as to developing a safety improvement project on state-owned roadways in Rollinsford.
Oh, good.
Work along Rollins Road, Somersworth, Main Street, Silver Street, New Hampshire Route four, and Roberts Road include removal, replacement, and/or installation of horizontal curb sign, oh, I was just kind of quite following up on that. The intent of this project to increase motor safety on state-owned roadways throughout the town, proper signing will aid in the reduction of motor, motorist speeds and crashes along curbs, which is kind of just saying the same thing.
Rather have a truck light at the corner?
Yeah, I know.
Or one ad in Roberts Road, but okay.
Saying, so what they're, okay, so including the, as part of the transmitted are two copies of the municipal work zone agreement where, that all municipalities are asked to sign as an acknowledgement that the department will have the authority to control traffic through the work zone in duration of the project.
On their road, yeah, well.
Yeah, so.
You can only have choice, right?
Yeah.
Okay, just let us know if they'll have flaggers up in the.
Right.
Well, thank you, we don't really have, but.
That's not replacing the project of the U N H students came in and talked, I mean, that's.
Cause there's several roads they're putting. They're putting out several, I guess, so.
Bob was copied on it as well.
Thank you for the signs. And Chevrons.
That is all I have.
Alright, well, let's go home. Thank you all for coming, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, we'll see you on January third. I'm happy we didn't get much snow, as I thought we were gonna get last night.
It was scary, 'cause it hit us, my window all night long.
Yeah, it was kinda concerning, I thought, that was a heavy rain. I took the dog down, like, oh, that is not rain.
No.
That is sleet.
What did you say, January third?
January third at six P M.
Six P M.
And we, it's gonna be, it's gonna be just the. Just the department head, if they have business, so if they don't, and obviously the public, if they wanna tell us something. Or ask, or whatever, and that's it, we're not, I figured, I don't wanna make them wait, if there's a P O or someone that needs attention, we can take care of it, so.
No, you have, I have a business, but I don't know. Do you want to get purchase orders?
In New York, we'll be here.
So it's not anything.
No, but if there's like.
Where is B and B printing?
Oh.